All right, it is officially 5:30, so we are going to call this meeting of the Marion County Board of Education to order, and I need a motion on item 1A, please.
I will make a motion to approve December 14th, 2023 board meeting agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right, we've got student ambassadors in their own house tonight, so take away ladies.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Brady. I have been a part of the student ambassadors for two years now, and this year I was selected to be a part of the executive council.
Hi, my name is Rose Cobble. This is my second year as a student ambassador, and I also am currently a member of the executive council.
We've had a lot of exciting things that went on this week and this month, really. Leading up to Christmas break, we've done a lot of Christmas celebrations, especially during club weeks and stuff like that, so we've definitely done a lot of activities to give back to charities and stuff. For example, we did, we just finished our camping drive here at the high school, and we have a shoot drive going on, and we are doing a Christmas week this week where we all get to celebrate and dress up and just kind of relax as finals approach.
This week, the high school and the night academy are taking finals, namely today and tomorrow, and a bunch of the middle, not middle schools, elementary schools are doing plays and musicals, namely Wes Man did Elflandia, I think was what it was called, yesterday.
That's about it. Thank you, ladies. All right, now we're going to have our pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is communications. Item 3A is public comment, and we do not have anybody signed up for public comment this evening, so we'll move on to 3B with our superintendent report.
All right, well, lots of good things to share this evening. So the first thing I want to take note in is we're standing right in the library, but last week we had, we welcomed our employees, retirees, and community members to the Marion County High School Community Open House. So again, we had a huge turnout and very, very positive comments about the awesome renovation. And again, if you haven't taken part of that or haven't been through the high school, please, please arrange to do so. I think you'll be quite surprised at the transformation. Continuing on facilities, the Robie Dome roof replacement is now finished, so it's a nice picture from at the area technology center. So we now have a new roof on the Robie Dome, and it's white. So earlier this week, they began putting trusses on the new Calvary Elementary, so you can see the crane that was there and the metal, the steel roof trusses that are being placed on the masonry walls. So I'm really excited about this project. So part of the new Calvary Elementary will have a large mural across from the gym that heads over to the office area, and in this, in this project, there are a couple of murals, but that's the largest one, and they, Randy's somewhere here, there he is, he said, what do we want on these murals? And I'm like, well, I don't know. And so I started thinking and looking at options, and he shared a couple of ideas of other schools that had some standouts, and of course, a mural behind that. So I met with Jamie Brown, she's not here, but I met with the Young Historians Club and talked with Ms. Potters, who's just back there, about like, what can we do with this project? So one thing that I would like to see is to honor the history of Calvary, and so two of the pictures that you see there, Jamie's already been on it and done some research, and she's found two existing Calvary Elementary schools, so one on the top left there, and then one in the Arbuckle area, the one-room schoolhouse that burned in 1976. So she's, she and her students have been doing some research, and we plan to incorporate that into the mural, and then we're also going to incorporate some artwork, I think, with Ms. Potter. So just again, really excited about this project and can't wait to see what they come up with. I do think they're going to be spending some more time in January on this, so hopefully we can bring them back maybe in January or February to get an update from Ms. Brown and Ms. Potter and the students that are involved in that project. So pretty proud of our HUC Spalding Academy students, and we'll have 15 that graduate this month, and congratulations to them. So we have quite a few students in this with Ms. McCray, and feel free to jump in and add to it. I see you smiling.
There's more now.
But, and yes, we do have more students that have passed even since we did this, but we have quite a few area technology center students who've gotten their, earned their certifications, and I do want to recognize PJ Lanham, who's in that picture. It's my understanding that he's the first student in school history that passed the CAD CAM professional exam, so we have an associate exam that we frequently have students pass, but he's the very first student in school history to pass the professional exam, so it's a big deal. So congratulations to him, and again, feel free to add anything.
That's a graduate level certification, like post-secondary graduate level certification. We can't find anybody in the state of Kentucky in high school who's passed it, but I'm still digging. But PJ is very proud, he passed associate as a sophomore, and has rocked on all year and has really rocked that test, so he's super proud, as he should be.
Awesome. So we're not going to name all the rest of the students, but you can see how many students that we've had that have passed certification exams. So thank you, Ms. McCray, and your teachers and staff for the awesome job that you're doing. So we always like to recognize and do a shout out for peak moments. So last month, on November 16th, it feels like forever ago, but we had our annual community reading celebration, and thank you to our first responders and our hometown heroes that joined us throughout that program. So continuing on, see, Mr. Manningly came in back there. We have some elementary students who worked with the court-appointed special advocates to design the coffee sleeves, so it'd be a nice way to share with the community and to recognize Lebanon Elementary School. So Marion County Middle School held its night of the arts last week and featured students who have studied or participated in Spanish, guitar, choir, or band. Ms. Farmer, you want to add anything about that night? I don't want to put you on the spot, but, all right, awesome, that's what we like to hear. Continuing on, we have several slides of LES pictures, but LES had its winter performance today with each grade level taking turns performing in the school. So you see lots of happy students and staff in these pictures. Lots of smiles. I kind of feel like that top picture right now is right there in the top right-hand corner, that's the way I feel right now. Calvary Elementary performed North Pole and its musical recently, so again, lots of nice pictures to share there as well. And we got to give a shout out to our cafeteria folks today. We served the annual Christmas meal today, so lots of smiles were had from that meal. It was a spiral ham and lots of other things to go with it, so happy, happy students and staff of that. Preschool numbers, CES 16, GES 33, LES 19, West Marion 30, for a total of, I think it's now 99, but 98 as of when this was created. And a shout out to our exceptional Child Education Appreciation Day on December 2nd and National Athletic Administrator Day on December 11th.
All right, any questions, comments? Thank you very much. Moving on to item 3C, the fun stuff, we've got some recognition to do today, so.
All right, so the first I would like to recognize, I think she's hiding from me, oh, there you are, is Caitlin McCroskey. So Caitlin was recognized as a legislative senate page, and what she will be doing is she will be providing a valuable service for the Senate by delivering messages, running errands, copying materials, delivering bills, et cetera. So I just, that's a big deal. This is the second student that we've had recently to do this program, so we're very proud of you, and we can't wait to hear more about it when you get back. Anything you want to add?
I go for orientation in Frankfurt on December 20th, and I get fitted for my blazer, and I also get more information on what my job will require, so I'm really excited.
We're very proud of you. So next up, we have the Marion County High School Choir, and they've already, they've already taken stage back there, but they're going to be performing for us a few songs. Ms. Manningly, do you want to talk about the choir this year or sharing?
Sure. I'm really proud. We had some students who got to attend 4th District Honors Choir this year, and we also got to participate. Camelsville University reached out and said they heard such wonderful things about the choir program and how it was growing and how we were working on building that program back up. So they got to participate in the first ever Camelsville University Choral Festival. That was wonderful. They've even said it went over so well, they might consider even doing one in the spring, and they were like, if we do, you have to come back. We just really loved it. Most of these students are high school students, but you will see, I do have a couple of elementary school students that come after school because I work with everybody preschool through 12th grade in our school district. So if you have any students after Christmas break who are great singers, dancers, performers, send them my way, I'll take them. We're going to do just two songs for you tonight. We're going to kind of keep it short and sweet and a cappella, and so we're just going to entertain and perform for you here for just a second.
Holy infants, all tender and mild, sleep in heavenly peace, sleep in heavenly peace. Silent night, holy night, shambers wake at the sight, glory stream from heaven afar. Heavenly host, say hallelujah, Christ the Savior is born, Christ the Savior is born. Joy to the world, the Lord is come, let earth receive her King. Let every heart prepare it room, and heaven and nature sing, and heaven and nature sing, and heaven, heaven and nature sing. Joy to the earth, the Savior reigns, let all his songs employ. Whimby, whiz, and buzz, run, till, and play, repeat the sounding joy, repeat the sounding joy, repeat, repeat the sounding joy. He rules the world with truth and grace, and makes the nations prove. The glories of his righteous mess, and wonders of his love, and wonders of his love, and wonders, wonders of his love.
So next, I would like to recognize our students who worked on the Marion County High School, the Plow Art Project that we talked about at the last, oh, there's a picture of it, awesome. So we have, I think, one young lady with us tonight, and that's Ms. Yahida Rodriguez. So if you'd like to come forward, I'd like to recognize you, and then also Alicia Ruiz, who was not here this evening, but she was part of it as well. So thank you for coming, and awesome job.
It was really nice, a really nice experience. I liked it very much, and thank you for letting me do it. Thank you all.
Hopefully, we don't have to use it too much, though.
Item number 3D is our attendance, enrollment, and redistricting report.
Yeah, so Ms. Akers is at an infinite campus training this evening, so I will be doing that. So I'm sure I won't do it justice as well as she did, but I will go through the enrollment really quickly. Calvary Elementary with preschool, we have 226. Glasscock Elementary with preschool, 463. Lebanon Elementary, 341. West Marion, 393. Marion County Middle Schools, currently 417. Marion County Night Academy, 480. Marion County High School, 698. And the HUC Spalding at 130 for a grand total of 3,148 students. So going on to our attendance, our monthly report, our monthly average for November was 92.55, so you can see there we are in green compared to 2022, 2023 there at the bottom. Our year-to-date is currently 93.64, and that, again, that is currently in the green. We have taken the last week or two, we've had a little bit of a rough stretch with attendance, going anywhere from 91 to 93%, but we've had a lot of illness in the district recently. So if you continue on to the daily report, you see there on day 77 and 78, we have, we had been completely green better than last year, but the last couple of days, we have fallen a little bit behind the attendance last year due to that illness. We have completed 81 instructional days as of today with 93 remaining. We currently have 142 homeschool students. I'd like to take a moment to update you on our redistricting report, so we've had quite a bit of action since the last time that we met. We did have a conference call with Amber Quinn, who's the project manager for, project manager for TrendsFinder, so we actually met with her yesterday. Our environment, it wasn't what they call our environment, but our maps and our district enrollment and all of that is put in the system, so we can now start to look at potential boundary lines and work with them on a draft proposal for the board. So we have a couple of trainings left to do, but most of the behind-the-scenes work and the information that takes along is now complete. So we will start our weekly one-hour trainings, and that will start with Ms. Akers and Mr. Spalding. That will begin very soon. So on the agenda tonight will be the new school names that the board will approve, and we look forward to moving forward and working to make this thing happen. Any questions on that?
Moving on, item 3E is our finance report.
Looking at the month of November compared to the same month last year, the big thing I think you'll notice there, we have finished our audit, and Ms. Abel's up here, just a few minutes ago over that, but we do have our official beginning balance of $10.2 million is where, after the audit was all finished, so that, again, 2.6 of that was the couple funds that we were able to do. So looking overall at the individual revenue, mine items, pretty consistent, again, as we continue, a good, I think, is that interest is up big time, we're still at about 4.69% this month, the rates will change with the market, so we're still up. SIC is down 151,000, and then we've had some cats came in, so you see some interfund transfers and things like that. So overall, we're up $227,000 this year. We did get our first big, huge, the larger of the property tax collection. The sheriff's office did report, they've had a better response to percentage of participation and going and paying them early, so we have a good collection rate so far. Looking at the expenditures for the same period of time, again, pretty consistent. Again, the big one on there is the 2,600, we're up, we spent $183,000, but again, a lot of this has to do with that, those March 3rd. We installed damage repairs that happened after July 1, so we're down, our expenses are up 216,000, so really and truly, revenue minus expenses were about $10,000 to be at, so we're running really, really pretty steady across the board. And then I'll pass out to, if y'all have any other questions, I'll, kind of, turn the data. One I would point out to you on there is talking about the March 3rd, if you take that out, we're actually, we're actually less, we spent less on our facilities this year, which makes sense, we've upgraded some ACs and the other thing, our utilities are a lot better. Mr. Manningly, West Marion and I were talking, we saved about $5,000 so far on water and electric, just for the geothermal system this year out there, so that system's working efficiently as well, so.
Just one item of reminder, the Marion County High School gym roof replacement that we just finished was an insurance item as well, and then hopefully, we will have one more roof to replace with insurance money if they approve it, and that will be the central office building.
Looks like good news on the diesel prices.
Correct. And that's one of those things, we can't, we can't control how much we use, but prices, just like you and I, the price of the pump is down, so it, and the number of loads is very similar, so that's, the usage is about the same, but just the per gallon charge is less, so that is down. You're right, Mr. Fields.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is item 3F.
I apologize that I was running a couple minutes late, so I'm going to leave to you now, so you've got a paper when you can clip around with. I actually was here two minutes early and realized I left my copy with my notes sitting, which is not very good when you're going to talk about numbers. I had just been going through them, so I debated weighing it, and I said, no, I better not do it. So, we're going to try to keep this pretty, pretty short and sweet, as short and sweet as I can. This is three in a row for me for board presentations, so I had one the last two days, but like the one I gave Tuesday night in particular, I got to tell them, I said, basically, I'm pretty a boring show because there's a lot of good, not hardly any bad, and a lot of good news and whatnot and stuff, which means you just kind of get to run on through it and hear the good stuff and move right along, so that's a good thing. So we're going to start on, what's page one for me? Kim, did you try to upload or?
I bet if you'd like from the paper.
It's up to, it's totally up to you. They're going to have their paper copies, so. The independent auditors report is an unmodified opinion, which is the opinion that you want to have. It has kind of a goofy title, but that's the good opinion and the one that you want to have, so you have a clean opinion on your audit, which is very important to know. And then, one week in, yep, I'll let you pitch up there. You're going to be about three pages behind me is how that works out. So pages at the bottom number, it says pages four through 10, 11? Or I always say Mr. Spalding's favorite part of the audit report, the lovely management discussion and analysis, and that's because he gets to receive a draft of the report before it's issued and then truly put this together, and then we go through and check and whatnot, but the good thing for the board, if you need a Cliff Notes version, this is your Cliff Notes version. So if you have to look back or you're wondering about how things came out, this gives you that quick snapshot of those items. So I'm going to go on to page 12, and I'll take half a second to remind you that I'm, the numbers that I'm looking at are back as of June 30, 2023. So sometimes I may say something and you're like, well, we're a whole lot further on that, particularly say with a Calvary Elementary or with what's happened in this building, than what I'm going to say, but most of that's happened since July 1. Okay? So at June 30, 2023, we had 39, it's going to be a couple more pages, Kim, it's on my page 12, so probably 14 or 15?
17.
Yeah, you're good. Okay, right there, that one, yeah. So we've got total current assets of $39.6 million as of June 30, 2023. Of that cash was up about $13.4 million, but that was mostly because we'd issued bonds and were working on renovations for the high school, but they weren't all complete, so a lot of that bond money was still sitting there awaiting those renovations to be further along. Okay? So as you come down, your big jump in non-current assets, which is your building and property and plant and equipment, that was up $13.2 million. Now, most of that's sitting in construction in progress because at June 30, we weren't 100% complete on a lot of these things, but sitting there ready to be capitalized essentially this next fiscal year as your improvements have completed or nearly completed, I don't know if we're at BG5 yet, Scott, but.
We're not getting close, we're getting close.
Getting close, yeah, yeah. Usually when you're in it and you're doing presentations in it, that's usually a good sign that it's about there. Coming on down, we've got total liabilities of $72.8 million. That's up about $26 million from the year before. $22 million of that is the bonds that you issued. The other big jump is in pension and OPEB, okay, that you all don't really, as a board, don't get much control over. The state puts those figures together based on projected underfunded liabilities. They run about a year behind, so there was a big jump there, and that's the other part of that big jump. Not necessarily concerning other than that we still have these retirement issues for underfunded pensions out there. Okay? All right. I'm going to flip over to page 13, and this is your statement of activities on a government-wide basis. So total expenditures of $47.9 million. That includes depreciation and stuff here. That's up about $6.5 million from the year before, but your total revenues were up $7.9 million from the year before, which is a huge jump. Now, these figures are government-wide figures, not general fund, not just general fund, so this is, this is everything. And with that, your change in net position went up $5.4 million. I doubt that you will ever see that again, probably in my lifetime. Most of that is Esser funding. We also had a significant capital funds request. You had lots of factors that led to that very significant increase. The good thing is it is an increase, so very positive flow for 2023. All right. I'm going to sneak on over to page 16, and this is your statement of revenues and expenditures for your fund statements. These are the ones that mirror more of what Mr. Spalding has given you with your MUNIS reports, okay? So when you look at that very first column there, just quickly point out that you have a, that you got your general fund that did have that positive change in fund balance of about 4.1. Again, he already reminded you of those capital fund transfers that you were able to take advantage of, but your, you know, general fund increased $4.1 million, and you did end up at that 10.2, which is outstanding. Yes, Esser has helped that, so you want, you know, as those funds begin to deplete and draw to a close, you'll have to. you'll have to, you know, just remember those things that Esser was paying for now have to shift somewhere. And whether that's a repeat expenditure or whether that becomes a general fund or how that gets managed is up to you guys. But may or may not be sustainable, I'm thinking probably on the not side, just depending on how everything shakes out, but fantastic for twenty-three. I'm going to skip way back. So Kim, we're going to be on, it's page eighty, which is a two-page page for your paper version, probably eighty-four, five, Kim. Give her a second to get there. Yep, still going. It's almost there, though. It is close. It's the high school activity fund paid required reporting, that's the beginning of it, right there, yep. So your schedule of expenditure or federal awards is very lengthy, because you all have lots of small pots of funds and then some very large funds as well. But the length of it comes because there's a lot of little pots of money out there, or segments of Title One, like parent involvement and other codes that get broken out separately here. But total federal expenditures last year, eleven point two million dollars, which is, I have to point out, because it's such a significant part of what we do in the audit, is looking at your compliance with federal regulations. There's a set of criteria that we look at that says that basically if a certain pot of funding, like Title One, like Esser, like child nutrition, spends more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a year, that at least once every three years, that's going to get looked at under a more, a deeper level, so that we're going to audit it. For twenty twenty-three, we looked at four sets of fundings. COVID has had an impact on this because funds like Esser got labeled as being higher risk, which means they basically get thrown into the pool of, doesn't say you must audit, but it strongly encourages and most of the time is going to lead to having auditors look at those pots of funds. So we looked at Esser, we looked at the childcare development block grant, which you all would say is preschool partnership, would be the name that you'd hear around here. Title One, and then also special ed for the year ended June thirty, twenty twenty-three. And we did not have any findings, which is fantastic. That is not a small feat. And poor Jill with ISI sample and four programs means she pulled a lot of invoices. Do we look at all of them? No. Do we pick a sample based on the regulations? Yes. And within that sample, we didn't have any findings. All right. The other couple of things I will do is tell you, there are a couple of opinions in the back. One is on government auditing standards. One is a written opinion on compliance with Uniform Guidance. Uniform Guidance is those federal regulations that I'm talking and telling you about with these federal programs so much. And those are your clean, unmodified opinions. The very back has a letter to you all as the Board of Directors, and essentially is also an unmodified report is a, what it does is give us a place to let you know if we had any problems with the audit. So for instance, this did not happen, but for instance, if, you know, we couldn't get information from Mr. Spalding, if we couldn't get like lots of supporting documentation, not talking about one piddly receipt that somebody couldn't find, but, you know, they just, Dragon Feet wouldn't bring it to us, wouldn't get us what we're asking for, any of those things. We're supposed to let you know that, and the way we actually do that is through that letter. We never have any of that here. And like I said, Jill and Brooke and Scott and several others probably get pretty tired of me by the time I'm done. I know Jill had to be tired of pulling invoices this time, so. But they're always great to work with, they're, you know, getting us what we need, and we couldn't be more appreciative of that. And Scott Kayla was bragging on you, was one of my colleagues at the office, and she said, you know, he's, she said, he's always so busy because of all this facility stuff, but she said, man, he knows what he's talking about when it comes to the numbers. And I said, yep, it shows, and he pays attention, so. She noticed and stuff, and I was going to point that out, so. Anybody have any questions? Terry's thinking over there.
Yeah, I don't think it's a question for you, though.
Okay. Well, that might mean Scott Taggarian.
I'll go ahead and bleed out of my mind. The Esser funds gave us a word of caution about Esser. What, not all the Esser funds were used for recurring costs. What kind, do we have an idea percentage-wise or some kind of feeling about how much of it is going, of the, all, you know, you can't just look at all the Esser funds and say, well, that's going to kill us later on.
Oh, no, no.
Is there a percentage that you are aware of, or?
We talk, absolutely, we talk about.
So this is something, Mr. Fields, we talk about regularly, so we can tell you down to the penny, how many funds, how much that we have assigned to reoccurring costs. So for example.
We probably have limited what we've done just for that purpose, so that we wouldn't be shooting ourselves in the foot.
And I can, I can tell you, last year you all expended like four point four million of Esser, just roughly. Don't hold me to this, at least two point four of that went to capital improvements.
Non-recurring.
Because you all were able to have approval through KDE appropriately, the way it was supposed to, to do your HVAC upgrades and then also your outdoor classrooms. Those projects are being funded with Esser, so those aren't going to be recurring expenses. And, you know, are, so it doesn't mean that there's, you know, and it doesn't necessarily also mean that there's another two million out there. These guys are looking at that, working with that, but may not be, you know, just a thought of, that we're trying to caution folks, because when we came through the ARRA days and the Obamacare days, when some of those extra funds dried up, we saw one of our nonprofits struggle. We saw a couple of our school districts struggle, because they'd been able to say yes and do lots of neat things, but then that funding wasn't there and there was a little bit of a clout, so.
And I think that the attitude gives us sort of a beam of light, knowing that we have managed the money in a way that will harm us as little as possible down the road, so that's a good thing.
Absolutely, yeah.
So one of the most popular programs that you probably hear about, that we will have to figure out a way to fund is I Ready. That's been very popular in our schools. So we, we will begin, we've had meetings in the past, but we will begin to meet regularly to talk about, you know, like trash or treasure, what we want to keep versus, you know, what we can do with that.
And that was funded with Esser funds.
That was, yes.
Were we able to do the additional three-year contract with Esser funding, or did they turn us down?
They did turn us down.
When is the, is it after the twenty-four school year?
Settling. It is officially September thirty, twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
It's the last part of the Esser funds.
But when it has to be spent by?
Current case we spend, and then we'll be on reimbursement thereafter.
But I, you know, I will say, I feel fortunate that we, I think we have a plan, a sustainability plan, that we're very fortunate that we're not in the situation of other districts, so I think we'll be okay.
I knew you would.
Yeah.
As a light, a small beam of light, looking forward.
All right. Anybody have any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you all so much. If you all do have any questions, feel free to reach out. I'm not able to stay the rest of the night due to some other obligations. So I'm going to say Merry Christmas and Skandale, but if you all need anything, you know we're fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
All right. Moving on, I need a motion on item four A.
I'll make a motion to consider approval of a twenty twenty-four board meeting schedule.
I'll second. Any questions here? Major changes?
There are no major changes, other than fall break changed a little bit. So you'll see that the October board meeting date's a little bit different, but other than that, it's pretty much very similar to this year.
We'll visit three schools.
We will, yeah.
What is it, the area tech, tech center?
I have it here in front of me.
Yeah. I think it's August for sure.
Yes.
I think Wes Marion.
You're welcome, Ms. Williams.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Night Academy was the other one, Mike.
I need a motion on item four B. I'll make a motion to consider approval of the twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar.
I'll second.
And we didn't see any changes between our first reading and tonight, correct?
We did.
All right. There it is, folks, play in your case. I got a question about it the other night, Monday night. All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion on item four C. With names.
I move to consider approval of naming the middle schools, and I, can I state what we talked about? I believe we're going to name the, what's now Marion Middle to Marion Middle, and we're going to name what's now Night Academy to Lebanon Middle. Does that sound, so I've moved that we do that.
I'll second. Oh, Peggy. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to item five, I need a motion on item five A.
I'll make a motion to consider approval of pay application number twenty-three to Griggs Enterprises in the amount of six hundred ninety-eight thousand, ninety-four dollars and sixty-one cents for work performed and sixteen thousand, one hundred ninety-nine dollars and twenty-one cents to vendors for materials on the Marion County High School project.
I'll second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion on item five B.
I move to consider approval of pay app number eight to Griggs Enterprises in the amount of seven hundred sixty-four thousand, one hundred ninety-seven dollars and seventy-six cents for work performed and three hundred and twenty thousand and ninety-six dollars and twenty-nine cents to vendors for materials on the new Calvary Elementary School, BG number twenty-two dash oh five two. I'll second.
Joey, on that one. Any questions here? All in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion on item five C.
I'll make a motion to consider approval of change order number ten to Griggs Enterprises in the amount of a credit of eighty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars and eighty-one cents for the new Calvary Elementary School, BG twenty-two dash zero five two.
I'll enthusiastically second that.
Credits are good. All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion on item five D, please. I'll make a motion to consider approval of pay app number one to Griggs Enterprises in the amount of one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and four cents for work performed on the Glasscock Elementary Masonry and Window Replacement Project, BG number twenty-four dash one two two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion on item five E.
Consider approval of DPO change order to various vendors in the amount of a credit of two thousand five hundred ninety-three dollars and twenty-two cents for Marion County High School project, BG twenty-one, one oh three.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion on item five F. I'll make a motion to consider approval of construction documents for the Marion County ATC partial roof replacement, BG number twenty-four dash one one eight.
I'll second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion on item five G.
I move to consider approval of construction documents for the Marion County Middle School partial roof replacement, BG number twenty-four dash one one nine.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item five H.
Make a motion to consider approval of construction documents for the Marion County Middle School partial window replacement, BG number twenty-four dash one two zero.
Second.
Thank you, Terry. Any questions here? All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion on item five I. I'll make a motion to consider approval of construction documents for the Glasscock Annex and Old Bus Garage Roof Replacement, BG number twenty-four dash one two one.
Second. Go ahead, I'm sorry. Sorry, Peggy.
Any questions here?
Yeah, so the construction documents, what is that, and what's our next move after this?
So once you all approve the construction documents, we'll be ready to go out to bid. So those documents will actually go out in mid-January, and we'll take bids later, and then be back in front of the boards with those bid results before those contracts could be executed for the actual work.
Okay.
So this is approval of the documents to actually go out to bid and get a bid from a contractor before that final step of actually executing a contract.
And what's the timeframe for the next step on our project?
We'll be going out to bid in January, taking bids in February. I think your board meeting is only eighth, because the first of February is on that day. So I think we'll be coming back in probably March for you all to approve those bids and to look to enter into a contract with those bidders. And then from there, we'll move forward with bond sale, et cetera, assuming approval. But you all will, you all will see each of those projects, the four projects you all just approved, those will be separate projects that you will have the opportunity to kind of review those bid results from.
Are we hearing any rumblings from other districts about, you know, crazy cost on any of the things that we have going on?
There's, they're still high, but they seem to kind of settle at a higher level, that they're not currently escalating. We've been checking material lead times, and there's currently not material lead times for the scope of work that we're looking to do here for these projects.
Other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion on item five J.
Make a motion to consider approval to declare used Marion County High School baseball uniform surplus and the proceeds for the sale of these items to the Marion County High School baseball team.
All in favor?
Uh, can I, I'm curious, I'm curious, what kind of market is there for used baseball uniforms?
I had the same question, Terry.
Yep. Carrie asked me the same thing earlier. So I think there were some previous players who were interested in purchasing their old uniforms.
I was thinking in the General Assembly, they replaced the chairs.
Yes.
And they were junk.
Yeah.
But people who sat in them and served wanted them, so it's probably, we have some people interested that we might be able to raise a little money for the baseball team. Okay, thank you.
Moving on to item five K.
Did we take the vote on that?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Five K, you need a motion?
Move to consider acceptance of serving line bids for Marion County High School, which is here. One bid from C and T Design for three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars, and that's a total package for the serving line and kitchen remodel. And then there's another bid for three hundred twenty-seven thousand, one hundred sixteen dollars for the serving line portion, and another bid for fifty-two thousand, one hundred two dollars for the kitchen remodel portion.
I'll second.
And I think it'd be a good idea to hear what's involved, that's a lot of money.
Yes, sir, it is.
Jennifer might be able to let us in on, now that's only for the high school.
That is only for the high school, and actually, that was only one bid that I did break down for you all to see, the serving line portion and then the portion to do a kitchen remodel. With everything that's been done in this building, the goal is to make that as great of a space as everything else. We've done it out of the dining room, but then the actual serving line portion, the serving line that is in that cafeteria right now was the original in this building, and its heating wells are not working, so it does have to be. And its heating wells are not working, so it does have to be replaced. Um, the one that we have looked at, it's actually bid, is a nicer model and does allow for essentially three service lines where we've got two right now. You know, we could replace exactly what we've got in there and make it a little less, but then you've got two traditional institutional style lines where the goal is to try to make this look more like a college atmosphere for our students.
And Mr. Mills, to make you a little more comfortable, so our food service funds are restricted to just that, food service and, and the improvements they're, they're in.
Well, in the high school, we'll be serving more meals.
Yes.
Correct? So that, that sounds good. So I need to correct that motion to say that the bid is three hundred and seventy-nine thousand and the rest is a breakout of it.
So we've done, done a lot with C, CNT Design, correct?
Yes, and they were, as you see, the only ones that did it. I do intentionally put in all of my RFPs that the bidder has to do a site inspection. So I had a few call and want to bid without coming and doing that. And I said, you're not gonna get to bid if you don't do the site inspection, cause I want them to come in, look at electrical, look at plumbing, look and make sure that this equipment will actually fit. There are stories out there, people buy equipment that won't even go through the doors. And that's not something we wanna do.
So you've been pretty happy with them, so.
I am.
Great. Okay.
All in favor?
So are we looking?
Nope, sorry, Peggy. Go ahead.
Are we looking at getting, uh, different areas in there to bid? Or we looking at getting one, one big bid on everything in there, in the serving areas? I'm not, is it just a serving line?
It's the total. It's the total package, but part of that is a, a serving line. So I, I have some small pictures, but it, I mean, I know you probably can't see it, but it, it will look similar to this.
Okay, well, I can look.
For the serving line portion.
And I'm standing with our pillars, right?
Yes.
Yes.
And actually, um, Mr. Simpson is working with the ambassadors. So on one of those things, there's a logo. He's working with the ambassadors at some, on some branding and they're going to do a competition to come up with some branding and to, to vote our students.
That's great. Any other questions on acceptance of bids? All in favor?
Aye.
Item five L, I need a motion. I'll make a motion to consider approval to award the serving line bid at MCHS to CNT Design in the amount of three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion on item six.
I'll make a motion to consider approval of all student, student learning and support consent items A through K.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item seven is acknowledgement of personnel actions. So acknowledged. And Mr. Mills, I need a motion on item eight, please.
Madam Chair, thank you for allowing me to make a motion that this meeting be adjourned.
All in favor?